Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council, March 11, 2019. The meeting is called to order and prior to our roll call this evening, would like to remind folks that the City Council voted to make a couple of changes in our ordinance regarding council meetings and council activity. The major one, perhaps for the public's interest, would be the fact that we have two arenas, two areas during which someone from the public may wish to make a public comment. One is early on in the meeting under item E, excuse me, under D, public participation, or if that person chooses to speak also to that item on during the part of the agenda during which the discussion is held on that item, they may opt to do that. At this point, I have one speaker who has indicated a desire to speak, and that individual would like to speak during the item on the agenda. Having cleared that up, why don't we have a roll call? Our deputy clerk, Ruth Scott, is filling in tonight for our city clerk Lynn Physikas, who is ill, and so I'd ask Ruth Scott to call the roll, please.
Jacobson, Fanouken.
Here.
Stupedia.
Here.
Fagan.
Here.
Noriko.
Here.
Verbic. Favor.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Six present.
And prior to the beginning of the proceedings tonight, I would like to indicate that Alderman Verbic did call me earlier in the week and said that he was vocationally occupied, which in layman's terms, he has to work. So Mike will not be with us this evening. Prior to our approving tonight's agenda and moving on with the proceedings, I'd like to ask our second ward alderman, Bill Fanouken, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item C, approval of the agenda. If there are no additions or deletions to the agenda, I would ask for a motion to approve. Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Noriko, seconded by Alderman Fagan. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Stupedia.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Noriko.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Six yes.
The agenda is approved as presented. Now we reached the point in the proceedings where we have public participation. Has anyone indicated, Ruth, a desire to speak during public participation? Okay. We have one speaker who would like to speak under the public, and that is Steve Capitan. Steve, hi.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief, and that is, I want to address the growing deer population. The, I live on Sycamore Road, and deer have always visited my property from across the highway, down by the river in the wooded areas there. But they have come across this winter, and they have been voracious eaters, been denuding bushes and even the evergreens. And one of them got hit recently. Well, just a few days ago, I drove by one of the properties on Woodlawn, or Longwood, I lose track of which ones those are, on the west side of Sycamore Road, and there were ten or twelve deer surrounding the house waiting to waiting, and it was right at dusk, waiting for a chance to cross the highway. And so their people have been experiencing that on my side of the highway. I don't know what we can do about it, but it's, it was never a problem before, but it's, it's becoming more of a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, moving right along to E, presentations, proudly DeKalb. Before we get on to our first announced item tonight, I'd like to just indicate to those in the audience, I was gonna wear this, but it was just a slightly tight. You see that? We, we had thousands of folks in our fine community this weekend as the Illinois High School Association had the junior high wrestling tournament. A hundred and fifty-five schools were represented. There were about, must have been four or five thousand people in the convo center, as I had a chance to welcome them on Friday morning. They've been coming here now for twenty years, and through the assistance of a lot of folks in the area, we are guaranteed their attendance for another four years here at the convo center. Just gives us a great opportunity to showcase the university, to showcase the convo center, to showcase our community, and to allow them to spend a few bucks in restaurants and hotels, et cetera, in the area. So we're very pleased to, to have them. I congratulate the chair, Jared Johnson, and so members, so many members of the DeKalb Wrestling Club, who staged that fine event. Now, under presentations, proudly DeKalb, number one, Citizens Environmental Commission review of 2018 accomplishments, and the presentation of that commission's goals for 2019, I'd like to ask our environmental commission chair, Dan Kenny, to speak to this item. Dan?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, council, and city staff for this opportunity to share with you the accomplishments and goals of the Citizens Environmental Commission. I want to thank William Olekno, fellow commission member, for his assistance in preparing this report. I would also like to acknowledge the other members of the commission for their efforts in the CEC achievements. Other members of the commission include vice chair Claire Crone, Anne Schultz, Mary McGinn, Sharon Scala, Ken Cook, Rachel Farrell. In addition to our voting members, we also have ex-official members represented, representing the DeKalb Park District, Northern Illinois University's Green Team, DeKalb County Health Department, and the Kishawaki Water Reclamation District. It is an honor to serve the city of DeKalb with all of them. First, I would like to share with you the accomplishments of 2018. During 2018, the Citizens Environmental Commission worked closely with the city to improve the quality of DeKalb's environment, respond to city requests on environmental issues, and monitor and update the city's sustainability plan. Highlights of the accomplishments during 2018 include proposing and working with city staff to develop a comprehensive native landscaping ordinance that was subsequently adopted by the city council. The new ordinance balances the interests of those wishing to encourage native plantings on their properties with those striving to keep their neighbors free from unsightly and overgrown vegetation. The ordinance promotes a managed approach to residential landscape that adds diversity to local plantings while seeking to maintain the overall beauty of DeKalb's environment and neighborhoods. We also were involved with revising and updating the articles of chapter 50 of the municipal code. This provision governs the composition, roles, and functions of the city's environmental commission. One notable change that we made to chapter 50 was allowing the commission to raise funds to support its initiatives to improve DeKalb's environment. Recommending that, we also recommended that the mayor sign the National Mayor's Climate Pact. After researching the pros and cons of this pact, the commission concluded that it was in the best interest of the city to endorse the pact because of its prominent increase in environmental awareness and promote improved air quality. Developing an original logo for the commission was also undertaken that symbolizes the commitment to environmental improvement. This logo, along with the city's logo, will help to increase the viability and visibility of the commission. We also reviewed nominations and selected two recipients of the Pride Award, which is people responsible for improving DeKalb's environment. These awards recognized local residents and organizations and businesses that have significantly improved the local environment. Winners of the 2018 awards were In Bowden's Food Market and Matthew Belk. We also participated in testifying and making recommendations to the city council to support the current ban on smoking in outdoor patios. These efforts were successful in upholding the ban. We also were involved in preparing and adopting a policy recommendation for the approval of solar gardens and farms within the city limits. This policy requests commissions, the commission to be, provide input into solar projects before final decisions are made. Each year, the commission also agrees on goals they will work toward during the coming year. Some of the goals that we're going to work on in 2019 are to continue to monitor and facilitate the implementation of the City of DeKalb Sustainability Plan, to continue to develop new and innovative environmental education and communication programs for local residents, businesses, and organizations that promote environmental awareness and the implementation of sound environmental practices, to cooperate with the DeKalb County Watershed Coordinator and others involved in the Kishawaki River Watershed Study, which will be an important process that will be taking place that will study the Kishawaki River from its origins down by Shabano, all the way through DeKalb and unto the north. We will also continue to monitor the installation of LED lighting in the city of DeKalb, which is underway. Also, continue the work toward the installation of charging stations within the downtown shopping district of DeKalb. The commission sees that there's a need for charging stations for more electrical vehicles, and we expect that need to continue to grow. And so it is our goal to help facilitate that with the help of the city to install two charging stations. And finally, to continue to research environmental issues and recommend, and recommended policies, ordinances, and other measures to enhance the quality of the environment for the city of DeKalb. Issues that will continue to be explored during 2019 include the feasibility and advisability of allowing urban chickens in DeKalb, increasing community awareness of the potential hazards of radon gas exposure, and the advisability of allowing the use of coal tar sealants on driveways in DeKalb. Thank you very much for this opportunity to share the work of the Citizens Environmental Commission, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have questions.
Thank you, Dan, on behalf of not only this city council, but the city of DeKalb. I just want to remind folks that in addition to your stalwart duty as chairing this commission for the city, as executive director of the DeKalb County Community Gardens, what a success story that has been and continues to be. Your leadership in that and with the food sustainability issue that we have in our community, not the least of which is in our Antiglen North Revitalization Project. Dan, you are John Q. Public Champion, you really are. And I can't say enough for your efforts on behalf of the city. Would you please help me thank Dan Kenny? Now, having said that, we'll see what complaints we could get here, Dan. Any comments from council, Alderman Noriko?
Dan, I just want to thank you and the other commission members for your hard work, especially recognizing that all of you are doing this as volunteers. The passion and commitment that this commission shows is really commendable. And I look forward to seeing what else your commission will bring forward, but I think you're doing great work. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, Alderman Favor?
I just have a, I have a question on number five. The, I guess the question I have is, is there a standard for EV charging stations, or are is it still individual auto brands have their own plugs and proprietary charging?
As far as I know, there's more of a standard now, okay, can be used for multiple models and vehicles.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Alderman Stupedia.
I just also would like very much to applaud you. That was a tremendous lot of, an agenda that was full, and I presume by bringing it up here this evening, those things were accomplished. So I too have to applaud you and your commissioners.
Thank you. Alderman Fagan.
Yeah, thanks for everything you do, Dan. We really appreciate it. Getting back to the charging stations, I was just in a hotel the other day, and they had two charging stations there, one for a GE, one for Tesla. But really, this isn't gonna cost us any money, is it? I mean, they're gonna be the ones that bring in, and they're the ones that are charging that pay for this, right? How does that work?
I wish I could agree with that and say, yes, that's true, but I, at this point, we're just starting to explore the different possibilities. We are expecting there might be a cost, that's why we changed chapter 50 that would allow us to raise funds through grant applications and other ways to raise funds to pay for some of the initiatives such as charging stations. But we'll explore all the possibilities and do everything we can to try to get them to pay for it, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Jerry?
Alderman Fanouken.
Dan, as you know, I'm the, a past chair of the commission. I'm so pleased that the work is continued on. And Dan, I know some grants through Chicago Clean Cities, so we may be able to help you out.
Oh, excellent.
Okay, I think every member of the council has had a chance to say something, and they were mostly complimentary, Dan, and that's, that's good.
Unusual.
And, no, we thank you for your report. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, there are no appointments for this evening, and so we'll move to the consent agenda, which is usually approved in omnibus form, meaning that I do read all the items, and then we approve that agenda in one fall swoop. Motion. Let me read the, first of all, are there any additions or any corrections to the consent agenda? If not, let me read those items. Minutes of the regular city council meeting of February 25, 2019, accounts payable and payroll through March 11, 2019, in the amount of $3,371,210.09, and resolution 2019-050, approving the closure of a portion of Illinois Route 38 between First Street and Fourth Street on Monday, May 27, 2019, from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM for the 2019 Memorial Day Parade. I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
So moved.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Stupedia. Discussion, roll call.
Stupedia?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Six yes.
Motion passes, thank you. The consent agenda is approved. There are no public hearings tonight. There are no special considerations tonight. We move on to J, resolutions. Number one, resolution 2019-048, approving a final plat for the Egyptian Theater subdivision and authorizing a conveyance of real property. I'd entertain a motion to get this on the floor, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Fagan. We do have three folks who would like to speak to this item tonight. The first is Leslie Conklin. And let's try to keep the comments tonight, folks, to three minutes or less, if we can.
I wrote this, and I read it a thousand times, and it was gonna be three minutes long, but I'm not even gonna
Wonderful, great.
Now I'm not gonna use it, so tell me when the three minutes are up, because now it's just boring, and. My name is Leslie Conklin. I live at 153 East Lincoln Highway in DeKalb, which means I live between First and Second Street. I've owned the building about fifteen years, and I also look down onto Palmer Court. And I am here today not to talk about the Egyptian Theater. I'm thrilled for the Egyptian Theater, Godspeed to the Egyptian Theater, get to where they need to be. My, I would just be remiss if I didn't come up and voice my concerns about the plots of land that are going to Mr. Burke. Mr., I just miss Mr. Burke, and he seems like a very good neighbor, and we just found out we're neighbors. I live in the building, I own the building, and I live above. So I am the other resident who looks down onto Palmer Court. I will be looking right at the side of the Egyptian Theater. Right at the side of the Egyptian Theater. And my biggest concern is I just think it sets a bad precedent. I did not sign Mr. Burke's petition when he came around, because I felt when you choose to live in a commercial area, you should expect there to be change. I, you're not gonna move by the airport and then expect there to be no airplanes. And I have to tell you from the outside, the property that is given to Mr. Burke from the Egyptian Theater, I don't have a problem with. It's their property, they can do whatever they want. I have to tell you from the outside, it looks like a payoff, it looks like a bribe. I'm just saying, I'm gonna say it, because no one else will come up here and say it. I think the city is doing a great job, I think you're rock stars, I think the new city manager's a rock star, and I don't wanna burn any bridges. But I, I still have to look out that window, and I'm gonna see the property that's been conveyed to Mr. Burke, and know that he got that property and the property I just found out today next to his building, where all of us who remain quiet, and I felt were in not opposition of something going forward, and the theater going forward, we got nothing. And what it shows me is I picked the wrong side of the battle, because the squeaky wheel here got greased. There are eight business owners, I believe, down that, property owners down that block, and they will get nothing. They don't get a parking spot, they don't get, they don't get any compensation, because they were team players, and they wanted to see it succeed. And I'm sure, and I, and I, and I assume this will pass, but the next time, Mr., Mr., oh, my God, Bill, I can't, I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm not sure about you, Bill, but Bill told me it's the smallest piece of property for the least amount of money with the most discussion, and my fear is it will turn into the one of the most, most expensive pieces of property you ever sell. Because when, if it happens again, and somebody doesn't like what's happening to their property, they're gonna be looking to see what they should get in return. And I just wanted to say my piece, so when I look down on that piece of property, I know I came here, and I, I said what I had to say. That was it. So thank you for your time, and thank you, I want, I got nervous, and I wanted to thank you all for a great shop hop. The Downtown Merchants had a great shop hop, we had people from Watsika all the way up to Madison, Wisconsin, and I think you guys are rock stars. So thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Yeah, we were visiting that day, and we we were visiting earlier that day, and I was wondering what kind of crowd you'd have, and then I heard later in the day that it was great, so.
Four buses, four busloads of people.
Yeah, congratulations. Okay, moving right along to this same item, another person would like to speak, and that is Steve Capitan.
Steve Capitan, third ward. When I saw this in the newspaper last week, I guess it was, what went through my mind was, whose crazy idea was it to convey city property to the Burkes and force the Egyptian to do the same? Does the eleven, I have a number of questions about the transfer of property. My concerns are related to that and not the final, not the passage of the final plat, which I am supportive of. It's the transfer of property arrangements that were done that bother me a great deal. So I have a number of questions. Does the eleven-foot shift of the building diminish the design in any way? Does the narrowing of the alley interfere with the ability of delivery trucks to park and unload? The eleven-foot shift pushes the addition closer to the Hillside Restaurant Building, which sticks out much further than any other building. The 122 building was built to the lot line of the Egyptian Theater and city lot lines, long after the theater was, was built. With the transfer of the Egyptian and city property to the Burkes, the Egyptian will now be built to the lot line. It's a role reversal. For what reason, I don't understand. The question, does this create potential problems for the theater in the future with anything they might wanna do along the west side of their property? I didn't, I was not able to figure out the access agreement from the, the drawings. That one is, was a mystery to me. And it appears that the city, the notch property referred to in the backup, the lot line between the Egyptian and the city property goes right to the middle of the stairs. Half of the, the one side is Egyptian property, the other is city property, which would then be Burke's property. At a previous council meeting, the architect Lisa Sharp expressed the concern that the placement of the air conditioning units in the basement creates a close tolerance. Does this transfer of property inhibit the ability of the Egyptian Theater to maintain or replace the units? Can the Burkes fence or build to the lot lines of any of the properties? What does the city get in return for the gift of this property to the Burkes? I couldn't figure that out. The only thing referenced was maintenance. And so if I, I complain about my neighbor, the resolution is not for the city to enforce the maintenance, but rather to force me to transfer my property to my neighbor? That doesn't make any sense. Compare the impact of the original proposal on the Burkes, compared to the other businesses, and you heard from one of them, and residents overlooking the alley. The Burkes get the garbage dumpster corrals moved away from their view. Mr. Burke didn't mention, he says, I can see Second Street. Yeah, well, closer than Second Street, he looks down from that window into the dumpsters.
You're at three and a half now, Steve.
I'll try and wrap it up. They have screening in looking at the wall, the trees are there, will still be there with either proposal. The businesses and residents lose parking by the dumpsters moving across the alley. That strip of land that the city wants to give to the Burkes that runs down to First Street could be used for parking to replace the parking that the businesses are losing. There could, you could make five spaces out of those, I did the math. One last thing that's kind of interesting, besides the, well, the issue of transfer, of the, the city code and the requirements involved, how is the intention decision referenced in the backup made? Shouldn't the city be discussing this before a decision is made? Before they publicize it? Because if you're publicizing an intention, there has to be discussion before the intention. I'm, I, that's backwards.
Thank you.
The square footage of the property is more, that the Burkes are getting more square footage than the Egyptian. Add it up, I did the math, twenty-seven feet more. What is the city getting? Finally, please pass the final plat, but postpone any transfer of property, be it city property or forcing the Egyptian to do the same.
Thank you. I thought we had one other speaker, but that speaker has indicated they'd like to speak to another item on the agenda. So those are the two speakers who would like to speak to this item. Now I'd like to turn it over to our city manager, Bill Nicholas, who can further speak to this item in total. Bill?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. And I want to thank Ruth Scott for stepping in tonight, even though she's a little bit under the weather. As I said in my background summary and as Dan Olson had explained in some detail in his background memo to the council, at the last general meeting, as you know, of the council, the council unanimously directed me to convene representatives of the Egyptian, several concerned neighbors and others to work out a possible compromise regarding the potential impact of the proposed Egyptian addition within what is presently known as Palmer Court, which is public property. And that meeting was convened on February 26th in City Hall here. It included Mayor Smith and myself, the Egyptians' board chair, Dan Shuey, the Egyptians' executive director, Alex Narad, and Gavin Wilson, Larry and Kay Burke, Don Harper of Urban Construction. And it was reported in the local media in the days that followed that this mediation session led to agreement by all, a tentative agreement by all the parties present on a number of things. And one of those key matters is before the council tonight, and that is the final plat that had been proposed on February 25th. It was agreed that, by all the parties, that that, as it was presented to the council, should be presented again tonight and it is, as you know in your background, for support. However, there was a little bit of a conversation about should there be any other encroachments of the Egyptian in a direction of the Burke's property and would there be a buffer from those that might happen at some future point? And one of those was on the west side, one area, a small area that the Egyptian owns that abuts the Burke property on the west side of the current theater was, with the support of the representatives of the Egyptian Theater who were present at that meeting, it was determined that that should be traded to the Burkes for a dollar. So that is a total of about 677 square feet. And then there's something which I call the notch property, which is immediately west of the proposed addition and south of the stairs and the fire exit, so it's not overlapping, but south of. And there should be, yes, you can, it's a little hard to see, but I think you also have something in your background. And that area currently is behind the curb, if you will, that exists there, beyond the north side of the curb. It's not a buildable area. It has some underground utilities in it. We wanted to always maintain access to that and have a utility easement there and that is included. And that area is 464 square feet, almost 465 square feet. We have a couple of trees there. There is a gas meter, fairly large commercial gas meter. There are several private electrical transformer boxes there that relate to the Egyptian Theater. Access would have to be maintained and that is what's proposed. And the reason I'm going over these two things, and there's one more, is because that was part of the package of agreed items at that meeting. Finally, there's a, there's a narrow stretch, again, it's on the north side of the curbing of the alley that leads from First up to Palmer Court and into the vicinity of where the Egyptian addition is to be. That has for many years gone unattended by city crews. It's sort of out of sight, out of mind. It's not something that we go, we generally just drive by and it's behind the curb, so I think it was considered that it was private property. There is some underground wiring there and again, this whole area would be covered by a utility and access easement in order to allow us, as we wish, to repair lights and so forth. And that area is 1,162 square feet because of the elongated shape of it. The total of the city land that would be up next meeting on the 25th before the council for approval for transfer is 1,627 square feet. The total area of the proposed addition to the Egyptian Theater is 2,277.4 square feet, so the Egyptian addition is considerably larger. So I mentioned these not because they're before you tonight, but it's important that the council understand we were asked to find a compromise. This was part of the compromise and I think all parties who were present and they're here tonight and can speak for themselves agreed that if the council was to approve the Egyptian final plat tonight, it should do so with the understanding that it's also accepting the other parts of the package. And that's why it was presented to you tonight, as it has been in the background and as I'm presenting it to you at this moment. So the immediate proposal here is to approve the resolution that pertains to the final plat for the Egyptian Theater and also the conveyance. And the survey plats I've just described verbally will be before the council at the next regular meeting on the 25th.
Comments from council, questions? Alderman Norrico.
My understanding is that while this may not be a perfect solution, this is the best solution under the circumstances. And I'm looking to the Egyptian representatives for assurance that you're satisfied as well, that we aren't just, you know, trying to satisfy a resident, albeit a long-term resident, but that the Egyptian who will, whose programming and economic impact will benefit the city as a whole, that you are also able to work within this compromise. And again, realizing that with a compromise, everybody loses something, but everybody gains something too.
Are you requesting that executive director, the Egyptian, Alex Narad, speak to this item?
Yes, I would appreciate that.
Yes, so on behalf of the board, you know, we are very comfortable with this and very thankful to city manager, Bill Nicholas, for coming to this. We had a wonderful conversation with Larry and Kay Burke in addition to Bill and Jerry was there. I think it was a wonderful conversation and it really allowed us to maintain the intent of the project moving forward and our board is fully behind this.
And also kind of one step further that, especially as construction starts and not only the Burkes, but the other property owners are going to be impacted, I mean, there's no way, there's noise, there's dust, there's whatever else flies through the air with construction, that you will make, you know, every effort to bring them into the discussions as well to minimize to the extent possible the impact on their lives and their businesses.
Correct, yeah. And I've personally met with every single surrounding business owner, given them my personal contact information, said as we move forward with this project, if there's any other deliveries, maintenance work they're having done, to talk with me, we'll coordinate that with our crews. The last thing we want to do is negatively impact any of our neighbors, so we want to work positively with all of our neighbors to make sure that this project goes as quickly as possible, the least amount of impact, so that we can get to the other side of this where we're seeing the positive results of it.
Because hopefully, yeah, that will come soon enough that those area businesses will begin to be impacted positively with the additional traffic and foot traffic and so forth.
Yeah, and like I said, we've been in great communication with them so far. There's a special event that many of the retail businesses are planning in May. We've worked with them to make sure we don't have any significant work that's going to happen before that event that'll impact them. So I'm feeling very confident about all the conversations that have taken place and we'll continue to maintain that through the entire project.
Okay. So you won't have any open manholes in the sidewalk for the May event or anything like that?
No, we won't be starting any significant work until after that May event in Palmer Court and we have a lot of respect for Irving Construction and the work that they do to expedite things and make sure that there's the least amount of impact on the neighbors as well and that it's a tight and clean workspace throughout the entire project.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other conversation, comments or questions regarding this? Welcome, Alderman Jacobson. So what we're asking basically is to approve the final plat for the Egyptian Theater subdivision and authorizing a conveyance of real property. Is that correct?
It's correct.
Roll call.
Fagan?
Yes.
Norrico?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Stupedia?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Resolution passes. Item number two, Resolution 2019-051, authorizing a final development incentive agreement for the renovation of the Egyptian Theater, 135 North Second. Motion, please.
So moved.
Been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Stupedia. We have one additional speaker on this and then once again is Steve Kapitan.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate your forbearance the last time. I will take less than three minutes and then it should be less than six total. Because the property, if you add them all up, is more that the Burkes get than the Egyptian gets, including, if you include the Egyptian property. And the Egyptian is not going to object to it because they don't want to upset the apple cart, but they're being, make no mistake, they're being coerced into this. Make no mistake about that, that's what's happening. Anyway, my concern also too is I want to see those questions that I raised answered, whether it's after the fact or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, that is the last speaker to speak to that item on our agenda and I would once again ask city manager Nicholas for any final comments regarding this proposed resolution.
Thank you, Mayor. On December 18th, the council approved a preliminary development incentive agreement and so before you tonight, after a lot of consideration and discussion, we have a final development incentive agreement. The essential terms, excuse me, have been portrayed for you in summary form in my comments and a longer explanation is provided in your background and that's also been available to the public. I'll just very, very quickly talk about the specific terms and yield to council for discussion. There is again a reference to the fact that the proposed addition will be about 2,277 square feet. That addition will contain a full basement, which is largely dedicated to mechanical equipment for the new air conditioning system and conceptual plans delineate at the rooftop level, condensing units for the same air conditioning system. The owner, in this case, Egyptian Theater, Inc., commits to invest, and I quote, "not less than $4 million" to the completion of the project depicted on the plans. The city will provide a development incentive of $2,500,000 and that incentive will, it will not exceed the lesser of 2.5 million or the sum of all TIF eligible costs. That's the phrasing in the background. TIF eligible costs are delineated, I won't run down the long list, but be happy to answer any questions you may have about them. Should the cost for the completion of the project be less than the anticipated $4 million? The city would not diminish the amount of the development incentive according to this proposed agreement. The city would, or, excuse me, the owner would be required to deposit any such savings in a segregated account for future capital expenditures. The development incentive will be in the form of a forgivable grant, basically plays out over thirty years. And the owner is required to sign a promissory note and mortgage to ensure that it will use the monies as the council intends, satisfy all conditions of the grant that are delineated in the agreement. On the last day of payment, if there is, I guess I should say that, that will be when the last monies are expended from an escrow account, the clock starts ticking on that thirty-year period and if the owner fails to perform or fail to maintain theater operations in that thirty years, the city may initiate action to foreclose on its mortgage. The Egyptian also is expected to agree to cooperate with the city in establishing a backup special service area. Now, Egyptians are not-for-profit and tax-exempt, but it will basically agree to a flat amount in this backup SSA to provide sufficient funds to reimburse any costs that the city may have to incur to help keep the public portions around the new addition in good order. And finally, there's one additional surety and that's in the form of a letter, credit or cash escrow or bond, the Egyptian Theater has the choice. And the point of this is just for during the construction process that all contractors on the site would work obviously to try to meet all of our ordinances, as council member Norrico mentioned earlier, with respect to the welfare of neighbors and the general public.
Thank you. It's been a long time coming to see all of our discussion reach this point. So I would like to open it up for any comments or questions. Alderman Fagan.
Last meeting I was here, I was questioning on the ability. Do we have anything that's set up that they can show that they have the financial ability to finish this project along with our two and a half million?
It is a condition in the development agreement that the Egyptian provides evidence of their financial capacity to fund the project prior to receiving funds, so we will be working with them on that, but that is one of the conditions that's expressly required in this development agreement.
So they will, they will have to show this?
Yes.
Okay. And then the distribution of money on our 2.5, which is whatever percentage it is of the $4 million, how are we going to distribute that out? I mean, are we going to be distributing out the 2.5 in parallel percentage during the projects being done? Are we going to go through our 2.5 million first and then their money comes into play? Because I know you said that if it does come in under $4 million, that we will be able to put that in escrow for later use?
Yeah, it goes in an escrow fund and I don't, I don't believe we measured out which dollar comes first and which dollar comes next, but obviously they have to perform in order to meet the terms of the agreement.
Okay. That's good.
Is that a satisfactory answer to you, Alderman Fagan? Okay, Alderman Jacobson?
I obviously through the years have been rather critical of some of our agreements with the Egyptian. I appreciate that this one is on a thirty-year term with clawbacks. I think that's the best protection of the public's money is to have, at the very least, if something were to happen there, they were to cease operations, the ability to foreclose that lien on behalf of the taxpayer. Being that we have millions of dollars into this building, I think it gives us the best level of protection that I've seen in one of these agreements thus far and I'm excited to see that one, not only to protect this investment we're putting in, but to effectively protect the investment we've already put into that building of taxpayer money. I think the only thing that's, that I'd like to see added to this would be basically a one-and-done provision, saying that if we're going to give this two and a half million, it's effectively twenty-five years. effectively 25 years of our committed $100,000 a year, that this would be in lieu of that. That we would give them the ability to run several more events a year, which should certainly help to create a stability for the theater and to allow them to be fiscally independent. And I think I would be much more comfortable, and I'm going to propose that we amend this, to include effectively a one-and-done, that this would be, upon the transfer of this $2.5 million, that any additional monies from TIF or annual expenditures under agreement would cease. And I would make that so in a motion.
That's, that is made as an amendment to this?
Yes, please.
Do I have a second to that amendment?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, that this is a one-and-done. And let me, for my own personal edification, explain or hear an explanation of what that means. Does that mean going forward, we would not add any more to the $2.5 million that is coming from TIF funds, plus we would not be asked to contribute any more monies akin to the $100,000 that we have been giving over the past several years to the Egyptian Theater?
Correct.
Are you comfortable with that explanation, Alderman Fagan?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I think I should point out, on the advice of our city attorney, that whatever the logical merits of that, this is not enforceable if you were to perceive of that, because this council cannot dictate what the next council will do, or the next council, or the next council over the next 30 years. So it's, it couldn't be written up as it's been proposed.
Could it be advisory?
Oh, it's only, that would have no weight in law.
Okay. So hearing that, I guess there is, yes, Alderman Jacobson?
Again, a future council would have to vote in the affirmative of that effectively, which is, an affirmative vote is five votes instead of four. That would be the majority now. I'd like to see, again, that we, any existing agreements, that we move toward ending those, and leave it up to a future council to decide what they feel based on the project, or based on the assets coming forward, if it has merit, but that any existing agreements are to cease with this one.
Alderman Fagan?
The reason why I voted for this, to go along with Alderman Jacobson's suggestion, is I do, I've mentioned before, I do have a problem with that coming back again and asking for more money. But, you know, as the executive director said, was up there two weeks ago, I mean, they're going to bring in, how many more people into this town? How many more shows are they going to be able to do? And that should be able to cover that, I would believe, that $100,000. So that's why I came along with your suggestion and seconded yours.
So this amendment, if passed, would simply be this council's indication that that is what we would like going forward, knowing full well and good that it is not necessarily enforceable.
Yes.
Is that correct? Dean, did you hear what I just said?
I did. It's not customarily our recommendation to pass something that's not enforceable. I guess from a-
Okay. Well, that's why I asked the question. I want to see what this council feels of that amendment.
If it is something that's put in the development agreement, I'm not certain how, this is brought forward as a resolution approving a development agreement, and so I'm struggling with how the council would seek to effectuate this. It's not something that's being proposed as an ordinance or a change of city code or something that would typically be used to carry forward a directive like that. But if it's approved, we'll evaluate and likely try and put that language into the resolution itself.
Okay. We've heard the advice of our city attorney that this amendment would not be enforceable, and he is recommending that we not pass this amendment. However, we have a motion to that on the floor and a second. Alderman Jacobson?
Alderman-
Alderman Favor.
When the motion was made, yeah, I was going to say, it's a budgetary item. It's something we can review every single year. I understand wanting to kind of set a precedent for future councils, that, you know, this was the direction at the time. But, but I look at it more as a budgetary item, and I wouldn't, I would not link the two together at this time.
Alderman Jacobson?
I mean, as far as I'm concerned, it's no different than any other development agreement that we've put into place, whether it's Park 88 or planning a subdivision. Yes, they always have the right to come back to us at some point if they change it. But to say that we don't have the right to put into a development agreement what we want now and hope to see that enforced, I mean, that's what we do in every development agreement we sign. So it's a bit surprising to me to hear that it wouldn't make sense at this point. I mean, that's what we do in our development agreements. We get the best deal upfront, and if down the line, some change needs to be made, or some expectation is different than when we preliminarily approved it, it's open for debate and discussion, and it has to be justified and those things, but that's what we do in every development agreement.
Mayor? Alderman Fagan?
I guess, my question would be to the city manager and the city attorney. You know, we had a situation with TIF money, people coming back needing more TIF money. Did we, between that time and this time, did we do anything on TIF money for anybody else that we said, "No, that's it. That's the total amount that you're going to get"? Did we do something like that? I'm thinking. Wasn't there?
The city has, so the example that you're talking about, the city went back and approved an amendment to the agreement in question to authorize additional funds. So this, I guess that's a good distinction. This authorizes only up to $2.5 million and nothing additional. The other approach the city has taken on some development agreements is to say, "This is the amount that we're anticipating, but we also know you're getting into an old building, and there may be complications, and so we're approving an additional contingency amount that can be invaded if you discover those justifiable unforeseen conditions." The inverse of that is not something that the council has done, where you say, "This is the total amount, and the city will not entertain anything beyond that."
Okay.
Any further discussion? Alderman Noriko?
I agree with Alderman Favor's perspective that the Egyptian, you know, would be free to come back and, you know, request $100,000. I think they're smart business people. They've heard the discussion with the council. They understand our perspective at this point. So I think it's pretty unlikely that they would come back, you know, barring, you know, disasters with the theater or something. And given the fact that our putting something, saying, "No, we won't give you any more money", into the agreement isn't enforceable beyond a limited period of time, I don't see the value of putting anything further in the agreement. I think we have other, you know, kind of checks and balances and discussion points before the Egyptian would get more funds.
Any other comments? Are we ready to vote on the amendment, the proposed amendment? Roll call.
Noriko?
No.
Favor?
No.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
No.
Stupedia?
No.
Fagan?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Okay, now we are going, that motion failed. Now we are going to vote on the original resolution. We do have a motion on the floor and a second. Do we have any further discussion on the resolution authorizing the final development incentive agreement for the renovation of the Egyptian Theater? Roll call.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Stupedia?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Resolution passes. Thank you. Number three, Resolution 2019-052, authorizing the award of a bid to Kern Contracting Company in the amount of $33,040 for 1,300 square yards of various pavement removal on Joanne Lane, Golf View Place, and Islemwood Drive, with staff authority to approve change orders up to a combined total of $36,344. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Stupedia. City Manager Nicholas, if you care to make any comments on this.
Thank you, Mayor. Just goes to show that on any given night before the council, there's always something different right around the corner on the agenda. This is pretty simple here. This is bids that are received for the milling of the street surfaces before the main project is done. And we'll be coming back to the council at a later point with some prices for the actual street surfacing, resurfacing that happens after the water main work is done. So we recommend, this is the lowest bid. It's a very aggressive bid, and we're happy to see it. We recommend your approval.
Great.
Any comments? Alderman Noriko?
This is just for my own information, but that's a huge gap between the two bids.
Yeah. They've both been in business for a long time. One was a little hungrier than the other and wanted to get going.
They must be very hungry.
And, well, also, this may be a little bit of future thinking here. They're all going to be bidding again on the resurfacing, so, yeah, see what happens.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Roll call.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Stupedia?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Resolution passes. Thank you. Number four, Resolution 2019-053, authorizing the expenditure of motor fuel tax funds in the amount of $215,000 for surface maintenance on the Peace Road Bridge as part of intergovernmental agreement 4254-2. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved by Alderman Noriko, seconded by Alderman Favor. City Manager Nicholas?
Thank you, Mayor. The original resolution was approved a little over a year ago. The work was done last summer on the bridge satisfactorily, and you're now approving, or hopefully approving, a resolution that would authorize payment in the amount of $215,000 for our share of that.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Stupedia?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Motion passes. Resolution passes. Thank you. Number five, Resolution 2019-054, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with DeKalb County for membership in the DeKalb County Fiber Optic Network and amending an agreement with Northern Illinois University for associated fiber optic connections. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Stupedia. City Manager Nicholas?
Mayor, about a month ago, the council approved a pretty weighty IGA with DeKalb County, and there was a hint that there was a final piece. This is a final piece. This is to polish off what needs to be done from the governmental standpoint in setting up a private and secure communication system with, between the city and the county. To accomplish this, the city has to join the DeKalb County Fiber Optic Network, or the acronym is DATA, and that helps us complete a connection to county facilities. There's another piece, too. NIU has what's known as a last mile connection. That's a small stretch of NIU fiber optic cable that's required to bring this service from the data connection, or DATA connection, using the acronym, to the DeKalb Police Department Building. The total annual support for the ongoing, the ongoing support, sorry to use the same word twice, is $13,650. That's the subscription price, basically, and we recommend your approval.
Discussion? Roll call.
Stupedia?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Resolution passes. Thank you. Moving along, K, ordinances, second reading, there are none this evening. L, ordinances, first reading. Our first one is Ordinance 2019-029, publishing the official zoning map of the city of DeKalb. Entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved by Alderman Noriko, seconded by Alderman Favor. City Manager Nicholas?
The state municipal code requires that we annually publish an official zoning map. The Planning and Zoning Commission and the council were busy in the last year, making some, mostly minor amendments, but some significant amendments to our official zoning map. And that includes some rezonings that have recently been before the council. I want to thank Dan Olson, who couldn't be here tonight, sends his regards, but is suffering from the flu. And he put together this very detailed table for you. And if he was here, I'd say we'd be happy to answer any questions, but I wasn't here for most of this, so we'll have to trust your memory and judgment on this. But these are all, this is a comprehensive list of all the changes to the city's map.
Comments? Questions? Roll call.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Stupedia?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Six yes?
That ordinance passes on first reading. Bill, do you enter, would you request waiver of second reading?
Please. Moved to waive second reading and approve.
Do I have a second on the waiver of second reading? It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Stupedia, that we waive second reading on this proposed ordinance and pass this ordinance. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Noriko?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Stupedia?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Six yes?
That ordinance passes. Thank you. Okay, our last ordinance consideration tonight is, again, first reading of Ordinance 2019-030, approving the final plans for Plaza DeKalb pursuant to Ordinance 2017-036 for property located on the northeast corner of Second Street and Lincoln Highway. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Noriko, seconded by Alderman Fanouken. We do have one individual who would like to speak to this. Bessie Chronopoulos, please.
Maybe they'll hear it wherever they are. Regarding this particular item, I have some questions, and I'll be very, very brief. And they center around parking considerations, concerns about multi-residential buildings, and the fact that we're looking at another four-story structure. Parking has been a concern in the downtown area for a long time. I'm not telling you anything that you don't know. And I know that there's going to be a meeting on the 19th, I believe, to get information and input from the residents in the downtown area-
19th, I believe, to get information and input from the residents in the downtown area as far as parking. Unfortunately, that meeting is the same time as the candidate's night meeting, so maybe there, there might not be as many people, can't always avoid conflicts, but that is a concern. You really need to be very, very careful about the parking considerations, and I'm a little concerned about, there's one clause, I think, in the ordinance that says, go ahead and pass it, subject to more input about the parking. I'm always uncomfortable about subject to, so I would rather that the council wait to have all of the information before moving on that. The other thing is, if there's something that we don't need in DeKalb, it's more multi-residential facilities. I know that the discussion has been to get more vitality in downtown, I'm not so sure that this is quite the way to do it, and, you know, I could dovetail into a concern that I have, too, and maybe the manager and the mayor could answer this about the cornerstone occupancy, because that had kind of the same idea to kind of get the vitality going in downtown, and I would like some more information about the current occupancy of that facility. And the other concern that I have is another four-story structure. We already know what one four-story structure looks like, and I'm not alone in this, there are others who go, yikes, you know, maybe that's a little bit more than blends in with what is for the downtown area. One final thought, as far as, you know, the multi-residential, I don't know, maybe our funds could be better spent on funding existing blighted facilities, buildings in the downtown with renovating of the upper part for residential use. Maybe that's the route to go, I don't know, but I'm a little uncomfortable with this right now, bearing what I've just said. So, and I don't know where two of your other council people went, but...
Okay, thank you, thank you, Bessie. Okay, I'm going to let City Manager Bill Nicholas now speak to this item, and then we'll open it up for any potential additional comments or questions. Bill?
Thank you, Mayor. Plaza DeKalb...
I was just going to say, before we...
Should I wait?
Yeah, the reason that Alderman Fagan has left is that apparently he has a conflict of interest on this, and he's going to recuse himself from voting.
Okay. And, should I wait till Alderman Jacobson is back?
If you'd like to, it's not necessary.
No, I've lost two.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
You still have a quorum, though.
I'm sure in the background information...
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Jacobson says he is also recusing himself.
Alderman Jacobson is also recusing himself.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, Plaza DeKalb was approved by the city council in August of 2017, and the work on this project, which involved multiple buildings, has been progressing since, moving east to west, as I said in the background. Improvements were first made to the facades of the two eastern buildings, accommodations for gaming goat were completed, the two upper-level apartments were completely renovated, and with that work complete, then the work moved west to the build-outs for the professional suites and Jamra Restaurant, and now attention is being focused on the plans for the reconstruction of the, and the construction of the new four-story corner building, which would take the place of the, it was one time, a one or one-and-a-half-story building that was previously occupied by Diamond Golf. Only concept plans for the corner building were available at the time of the approval back in 2017, so we, the agreement now comes with final plans, which the council had asked us to bring before you for approval. In compliance with that agreement, there are 21 new apartment units on the three floors above the first floor, and the first floor will feature a new grocery store tenant. One condition of the agreement, as Bessie said, was that parking, parking agreement would be executed as part of the final approval. As you know, the city is in control of who can use what parking spaces and where, except for the on-street spaces on Lincoln Highway, which are first come, first served, but anything to the north of there, or even to the south of there, tend to be in lots that are controlled by the city. As it was pointed out earlier, there's going to be a final meeting, there've been a number of meetings on downtown parking changes, possible changes, over the last couple months since I've been here and prior to that. These meetings have involved groups of merchants, groups of local businesses, public officials, and so forth. We wanted to make one last effort to engage downtown residents who live above the first floor of all the buildings downtown. Thanks to the police department, efforts were made to go door-to-door, we should have a pretty good turnout at the meeting on March 19th, what, because people should have something to sort of look at and aim at when there's a presentation like that, and so we'll propose what we've been hearing from the other stakeholders in the area, which is that merchants and their employees would be encouraged to park in the public lots, which would be one block north of the Van Buren lot, where unrestricted daytime parking is offered on a first-come, first-served basis. Residents of the Plaza Apartments, as proposed, would need to secure permits and designated, excuse me, designated spaces within those lots, so Glidden Elwood and Hayes parking lots, that's a block north, or it's actually in the block bounded on the south of Byloka Street and north by Oak Street, between Second and Third, and there's a lot of spaces up there. The council over the years has done a lot of studies of downtown parking, and every one of those surveys and studies has shown that we have, we have, and this is not an overstatement, an abundance of parking, the question is always, is it all right next to the doors where you want to go? And the answer to that is no, it never is in a downtown area. Sometimes you have to cross the street, sometimes you have to walk around a corner and so forth. People want to go right to the front door, but there just are never enough spaces there. So what we've done over the years is create a lot of parking the next block out, and it's in several of those lots that we're proposing, that the resident parking for Plaza DeKalb would be allowed by permit. That's something that we have proposed, and will propose at the March 19th meeting, but again, that's something we get to impose, that's part of the city's role and responsibility. Thank you.
Okay, let me see if I'm clear on this. One condition of the agreement that we are asked to be, to, okay, in first reading tonight, requires that a parking agreement be executed as part of the final approval, and this agreement will specify the location where commercial tenants and residents will park pursuant to their lease, and a fee that will be paid by the developer. So what you're suggesting is that we could pass this on first reading, and then prior to final approval, which would be second reading, that we would then have that agreement in place?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
We'll have the feedback, and then you can determine that that is adequate in the agreement.
And also then, will that play into the March 19th parking?
Well, that'll be before the next council meeting, so we'll write that up, and that'll be part of the background.
Okay. Is that fairly clear to everybody? Good. I'm glad, it's much clearer to you than it was to me, so, okay. So we have a motion on the floor, a second on the motion to approve this first reading for the final plans for Plaza DeKalb. We have two of our city council members who have recused themselves because of conflict of interest. Roll call. Excuse me, Alderman Faver.
So I just wanted to add a few comments. City Manager Nicholas said, I think it's an excellent idea to offer the permits to the further areas north or south of the, of the parking lots. You know, I have an anecdotal story. I was downtown last month to go visit the Egyptian Theater on the night of the jazz concert, which had DeKalb High School, Sycamore High School, NIU, and a local band, all playing. I got a parking spot, we arrived 10 minutes before the show started, I got a parking spot less than a block away, or in the, I'm sorry, in the next block away from the Egyptian Theater, and there were several other cars heading into the same parking lot right after us. I have to agree with the studies that we've done, I don't believe we have a parking shortage. I think we do have plenty of parking. It's about a block, I think the majority of them is less than two blocks' walk from any spot to the door that you're looking to go to. The other thing that you have to consider is, every time we build a parking lot, we've now reduced our retail footprint in our downtown area, so that is a cost to doing, you know, there's a cost of putting in parking lots. I don't think we're ever going to get to the parking garage that we've bantered about a few times, and the other thing is, I'm downtown probably almost every Saturday, and I think, you know, with the construction that's going on downtown, the renovations that other businesses have made and things, I, the downtown is just looking fantastic, and I've heard that from several people that have come to the city. I think we're, like I said, in other things that I've mentioned, the reason I'm running is, I think we're on a, we're on a roll, I think things are moving in the right direction, I want to keep, you know, going in that direction, I think we're doing the right things. Plaza DeKalb is going to be another fantastic addition to downtown DeKalb, and then the whole reason, you know, to go back, why we approved these buildings and these large projects is having these residents downtown are going to, are going to drive other businesses to want to participate in downtown DeKalb, they're going to fix up the other buildings that need to be fixed up in downtown. That's the vision for these large investments.
Thank you, Alderman Faver. Alderman Norrico.
I have a quick question. If a resident of the Plaza DeKalb is disabled and has the disabled parking sticker, would they be able to park in those, the Van Buren spots?
I think, I'm looking at the chief, I believe so.
Oh, okay. Thank you. They would be able to park there overnight and everything? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Faver?
Yes.
Finukin?
Yes.
Stupedia?
Yes.
Norrico?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Five yes?
Now, I see in the background material that approval is recommended, based on the timing of this project, waiver of second reading is requested. That would not be the case, or would that...
That's up to the council, as we, as I mentioned, we'll have the feedback on the, on the parking meeting on the 19th, the night of the 19th, we can write it up and get it done on the 25th, but I'll chime in with what Councilmember Faver said, what's happened already of Plaza DeKalb is a tremendous investment in our downtown, and, and we're on the brink of proceeding with the last phase of this, another tremendous investment, and we're also investing in that, so to get a start, particularly with the work that's going to also be going on on the west side of Second Street, now that the council's voted the grant to the Egyptian, I think has a lot of practical purpose to it.
Okay, is it the wish of this council to waive second reading? Alderman Finukin?
Actually, Councillor, if I may, typically we need six of the eight to pass waiver on second reading, with only five voting members here currently, how does that, what does our code say? It may be impossible for us to do that tonight, Jerry.
Our city code, if I recall correctly, is based on two-thirds of the Aldermen then present at the meeting. It does not speak to abstentions, but I think a reasonable and conservative interpretation of it would be, if someone is abstaining from participating in the meeting, they're indicating their desire to completely refrain from having any impact upon the consideration, so that would mean that we'd be basing it on two-thirds of the number of Aldermen presently sitting here.
All right, then I'll make the motion that we waive second reading and move to approve.
Second?
It's been moved by Alderman Finukin, seconded by Alderman Stupedia, that we waive second reading and give final approval to Ordinance 2019-030, approving final plans for Plaza DeKalb. Any further discussion? Roll call. Yes?
And just to note, to further bolster that, as Alderman Verbic is not here, it'd be five of seven in any regard, and five of seven is more than two-thirds is the minimum requirement.
Roll call.
Finukin?
Yes.
Stupedia?
Yes.
Norrico?
Yes.
Faver?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Five yes?
Ordinance passes. Thank you. Okay, reports and communications, council member reports. Welcome back, David and Pat. Alderman Jacobson, any report?
None this week, Mayor, thank you.
Alderman Finukin?
No report.
Alderman Stupedia?
No report.
Alderman Fagan?
I got something to say.
Good.
You usually do.
That's good, though, it's all good. Coming up, the first, South First Street Bridge will be being worked on, so that will be shut down the next month coming up. I've dealt with, I've talked to the city manager, and we're working on that, trying to head this off before they start work, be proactive on it. With that said, I am going to go along with Alderman Verbic on his April 1st, join him on his, his ward meeting, so we conclude the ward, the fourth ward, so anything that comes up on this, and hopefully, we will have something done by that time, but we are being proactive about it. We're very concerned about our people that are on and use Fairview, so, it's coming up, so, that's my report.
Thank you, Alderman Norrico.
No report.
Alderman Faver?
As was mentioned earlier, a week ago, there was a shopping tour of DeKalb. This past weekend, there was the wrestling tournament. There's a lot of things going on in DeKalb, and it's really difficult, I guess, to get the communication of what all is happening in our city at any given time, and I'd love to see, we've talked about this, I've talked with the city manager, I'd love to see, you know, a community calendar of events, you know, so that we get an idea of all the good things that are going on within our city at any given weekend. There is a ton of things that are going on, as we talked about the Egyptian tonight, there's just, every single weekend, there's something going on at the Egyptian, oftentimes it's two or three nights, a different show. So there's a lot going on in DeKalb, and you may not know about it, that's all, thanks.
Jerry? Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Jacobson?
I was reminded of something that I did want to mention by Alderman Fagan. Tomorrow night, my very soon-to-be replacement in the seat, Carolyn will be holding a ward meeting slash get-together, meet and greet the candidate at Fanatico Restaurant at 7:00, and we will be co-hosting that meeting, and I wanted to invite out anyone in the first ward, or anyone that wanted to meet Carolyn and see her perspective on things, to come on out again tomorrow night, Tuesday, 7:00 PM at Fanatico Restaurant in the great first ward. Thank you.
Yeah, congratulations, Carolyn. I see we have four candidates in the audience tonight, and I commend all of you for attending meetings, attending boards and commissions, we really appreciate it. Tracy Smith, Steve Capitan, our third ward candidates, Carolyn Morris, our first ward candidates, Scott McAdams in our fifth ward, and Tony Faver in our, you get a front row seat, don't you?
I do.
In our seventh ward are the candidates for election in April, and I commend all of you for, for your efforts. And Tony, I'm just going to... And Tony, I'm just going to add one quick thing, we have had a myriad of suggestions as to how we have a community-wide calendar, and if anybody has an idea at how we can get Chamber, DeKalb County Online, The Chronicle, WLBK, our website, to get a composite consolidated calendar, I'd be more than welcome to get involved in that with any suggestions, because I agree with you, there are just a lot of stuff going on. Alderman, did you have a comment?
I, I was just going to say, it can be done, it's just time and money, you know, just in, in a little creativity, it'd be, it's a great idea, and...
Yeah.
We'll look into it, I, and if we don't have the talent in-house, we'll figure it out.
Yeah. City Clerk, Ruth Scott, do you have anything?
No, sir, thank you.
Bill, our city manager, report.
One, one quick thing, the deadline for proposals for the TIF forensic audit were, was March sixth, and today, I, I requested some information about the results of that from the state's attorney's office. Today I got a note from David Barrow, who's the Assistant State's Attorney, and has been involved on the civil, civil side in support of this, and they're still looking over the proposals, there were three, two in-state, one out-of-state, and the range for the amounts, we had asked in an appendix, or the state's attorney had asked in an appendix for a breakdown of the costs, because we were doing ten years of TIF program financials, and it ranged from a hundred and two thousand to a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. We had, the council had approved a budget in December with a hundred thousand in the TIF one fund, and another hundred thousand in the TIF two fund, so we have the, the means to tackle any of these, but obviously, we'd like to see something a little on the lower end of the range. We're also, I should mention, in, in the midst of our standard annual financial audit, so this will possibly begin, just as we're wrapping that up, I mentioned to the state's attorney that there may be a week or two here just to negotiate over the start and the finish, because we have limited staff to be working on both.
Bill, do you or any of your other department heads have anything to report? I don't believe so. Everybody? Ray?
I was just going to make one brief comment about the community calendar, so we're still working on the website redesign, it's a project that's ongoing, and we had a conference call with Civic Plus, and one of the great features that we've seen, sort of a city calendar, community calendar side by side, so I think that's something we could implement very easily, it would just be a matter of the information coming to the city, so all those events that are being put on would have to be provided to us so that we could put them on our city calendar, but that's something that we heard in the forums that we hosted as something that was highly desired, so we're going to try and implement that.
Thank you. Anyone else? We do have an executive session to five LCS one-twenty slash two to discuss collective bargaining. I would entertain a motion to move to executive session.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Noriko, seconded by Alderman Fagan, that we recess into executive session. Roll call.
Mayor, just for clarification, that's pursuant to five LCS one-twenty slash two, C two, for collective bargaining.
One-twenty slash two?
C two.
C two. Okay, sorry. Roll call on recess into executive session.
Stupedia?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you, passes, we are now in recess for executive session. Thank you.